The Stearns County Board of Commissioners will come to order. We are having a little bit of internal technical issues, so for anybody watching, if you see another staff person coming in, that is why. Let's do the call to order. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present and accounted for. Our first item does not need any technical help. It's the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item of business is approving the overall agenda. Are there any additions or changes? Otherwise, if there's a motion to approve it?
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Nott. Thank you, Commissioner Mergen. Seeing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Public access forum. Is there anyone with us today who is wishing to speak on an item not found on our agenda? Or is there anyone who has let us know remotely? Okay. All right, seeing, not seeing anybody here who wishes to speak. We want to continue to encourage people who wish to address the board may do so in person or joining virtually. You can also email us if there's information you want to make sure that we have. Our next item is the consent agenda. Looking for a motion? If there isn't any requests for any removals? Not seen any requests. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Nott. Seeing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Now, at this time, we're going to recess our regular meeting to come together as the Human Services Board as we look at our consent items. I see Ms. Huberty, thank you. It's good to see you.
Good to see you. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I have a very short consent agenda today. There are two items on the Human Services Consent Agenda today, and they're items D1 and D2 on pages 63 and 87. First one's just the Minnesota Family Investment Program Biannual Service Agreement, and the second one is Claims Paid on behalf of Clients in Human Services. And I am available for questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Huberty? Or a motion to approve the consent agenda, the Human Services Consent Agenda?
I'll move to Human Services Consent Agenda.
We obviously only have so many choices. Who wants to speak up at any given time? Looking for a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mergen. Seeing no discussion or questions, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Thank you. Appreciated the information in the EMFIP application as well. Okay, now, we will adjourn as the Human Services Council, and we will come back to order as the Board of Commissioners. Our next item, Ms. Teich, I see we have a public hearing.
Yes, thank you. Today, I would like, I'm asking the Board to conduct a public hearing to consider modifications to the Transportation Sales Tax Project List. The Board was given this information when the public hearing was set, but just as a reminder, staff is proposing to add the County Road 145 resurfacing project between County Roads 45 and 44 to the list of projects funded with the sales tax revenues, excuse me, and we're proposing to remove the County Road 66 resurfacing from that list. The County Road 66 project will be funded at a later date with state aid revenues. There is a list of, the overall list of projects starting in 2018 on page 92 of your board packets, and unless there's any questions, we can proceed with the public hearing.
Commissioner Nott.
Just for clarification, can you tell me where the County Road is?
And actually, I was going to ask you, just for the public, it's always helpful because lots of times people don't know where the numbers are.
So County Road 145 is in the southeast portion of the county. It runs from just northeast of Fairhaven over in a north, or yeah, northeasterly direction toward Clearwater.
Yeah.
And the County Road 66 project that we're removing is in the city of Painesville. The condition of that road stayed better longer than we expected it to when we originally put it on the list.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, then, at this time, seeing no other questions, we'll open up the public hearing. The public hearing is open to consider this modification of the Transportation Sales Tax Project List. Is there anyone wishing to speak before the Board on this? Is there anybody that gave online comments or wants to speak? Is there anyone wishing to speak in this public hearing? Is there anyone wishing to speak in the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further questions or comments or a motion?
I'll move to approve the change.
Thank you, Commissioner Mergen. Is there a second?
Persky, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. Seeing no further discussion or questions, all in favor of the modification signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. Seeing none, the motion is adopted.
Thank you. For my next item, I'm asking the Board to approve awarding the contract for building demolition, excuse me, related to the County Road 13 Bridge Replacement in Melrose. There's one building that needs to be removed. Staff solicited quotes from eight qualified construction companies that do demolition. There is a handout in front of you. We received these quotes at the end of the day this past Thursday. The engineer's estimate was at $102,700. We received two quotes, and the low quote was Viton Company, Inc., and their overall quote was $70,300. This work would be done this fall.
I've got a quick question. Out of curiosity, just given the estimate and these two coming that much under, has something changed within the industry?
And actually, I think the engineer's estimate was high because I was a little concerned. This building is connected to an adjacent building. We did have a building walkthrough, and the companies that did the building walkthrough were not concerned at all about protection of that adjacent building. Some of the refinishing of that adjacent building will be done under a separate contract as a right-of-way cost to the project, just because demolition contractors and contractors that do building exteriors tend to be different. So we figured we would keep the building demolition separate so that could be done sooner in preparation for that bridge contract.
Thank you. That's helpful. Commissioner Mergen?
This building is on the south side and toward the east, right? Am I looking at it correctly?
It's in the east side of County Road 13, south of the river.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Comments or a motion?
I'll move awarding the contract to Viton Company.
Thank you, Commissioner Nott. Looking for a second?
Oh, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Mergen. Seeing no further questions or discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, say nay. The motion passes. Miscellaneous. Do you have one more? Okay.
For my next item, I just wanted to give the County Board an update on the local option quarter percent sales tax, and I think that there will be a PowerPoint presentation coming up. Otherwise, there is a handout in front of you so you can follow along with me as well. So as you're aware, the County Board approved collection of a quarter percent local option sales tax for transportation in July of 2017, and we began those collections on January 1st of 2018. Per that original action, that quarter percent local option sales tax will sunset on December 31st of 2022. So in that five years of collections, so including projected future collections, we've done four major intersection improvements, one bridge replacement, nearly 80 miles of resurfacing, and just over six miles of reconstruction. Again, some of that work will take place in '22 and '23 with those collections that were done prior to December 31st of 2022. Along with those construction costs for each of those projects, that sales tax covers all costs of capital improvements. So that includes the engineering, any necessary right-of-way, any private utilities that needed to be relocated because they were outside of the existing right-of-way, et cetera. So that offsets some of those levy-funded, or usually levy-funded, operations costs that are associated with a construction project. So hopefully.
Ready to move to the next one? Okay. Didn't know if we had anybody who could help you.
So this map just shows kind of locations of all of those projects that we've done with the five years of collections, including what's yet to be collected. They're throughout the county. As you can see, the green are those projects that we still have yet to be completed. So they'll be completed in '22 and '23 with those collections that we had. So our collections to date, you might recall that when we originally talked about this, we anticipated that we would collect about $4.5 to $5 million, and those collections have obviously surpassed what we estimated, and that's why we've done a couple of project list updates. We did do one in 2019, and now we just, obviously, a little bit earlier today, did one. So just over $6 million in 2018, almost $6.5 in 2019, closer to $6.5 in 2020, which actually really did surprise us with the pandemic. 2021 to date, we're at over $5.3 million. So based on what we generally collect in those last few months of the year, we're on pace to get almost $7 million. Just as a side note, that final payment for December, we get an estimated payment, and then we get a final payment. Those usually come in February or March of the following year for each December because there is a delay with those collections. The Department of Revenue does keep an administrative cost of approximately 1.3% off the top of those collections to cover the notifications, the collections, and then the distribution of the funds to Stearns County. So we are at a point where we should talk about what the Board wants to do at this point. And obviously, the first big question, and I should point out that these are just things for the Board to consider, and I'm not expecting a decision today. This is something that would be ongoing discussion over the next couple of months. So the first thing is, does the Board want to sunset this as it did with its original action, or do you want to extend it? Just kind of for reference, the total construction in 2024 drops to about $17 million versus the previous six-year average of almost $22 million. In 2025, we're down to $13.5 million. Over the last few years, we have lowered that county levy-funded portion of construction from about $2.9 to $3 million down to $2.2, and that's enabled us to keep our levy increases for the Highway Department relatively low while still trying to increase services or improve services that we deliver. Significant needs do still exist. We have several roads that are not included on our road program, and those, many of those are just resurfacing projects or some reconstruction projects. In a few examples I can think of, we have a section of County Road 44 in the southeast part of the county that's badly in need of resurfacing. County Road 1 that leads up to Morrison County in the northeast part of the county. We have several reconstruction projects, potential expansion projects that the Board would want to discuss as we update those, update our road program. So there are still significant needs. It would just take us longer to get to them. So the next consideration the Board, and I know I've had discussions with a few of you, is we look at that half, the quarter percent which we collect now versus half percent, if the Board would decide that they wanted to consider extending it. So keep in mind, collections at a quarter percent have exceeded our expectations, but then we also have our staffing resources and our ability to deliver those construction projects, particularly as they are reconstruction projects. The even inspection of our resurfacing program takes up a significant amount of our staffing resources. We were tentatively, obviously, we're still at the preliminary budget mode, but tentatively, we've gotten past the Budget Committee having a new design technician potentially for 2022. That would only be for three fourths of the year. We have been hiring consultants over the past few years to keep up with some of our needs. We currently only have two design technicians that can do those reconstruction design projects. Consultant-designed and inspected project engineering costs two to three times as much as engineering for projects done in-house. That includes even all of our overhead and benefits. You look at those costs, and of course, consultants are for profit, private businesses, so it's to be expected. And then also keep in mind that consultant-engineered plans still require a significant amount of in-house staff time between plan, review, and guidance for our processes. Well, you guys can follow. Okay, there we go. So the other thing to consider is the public input process. As you may recall, Dr. Williams and I went throughout the county. We had a lot of open house-style meetings. We talked about what this quarter percent sales tax could potentially do for us. We did not have great attendance, but we had some attendance, and we did have some great input. We got some email feedback, maybe some comments on our website. So if the Board would decide, well, we want to at least consider extending this, do you want us to do a similar, go out into the county, meet with people where they're at, whether it be municipal league, town officers' meetings? And then we just set up several meetings throughout the county just to try and get a good cross-section of input from people. We could also consider doing a website input process where we just put stuff out on our website, and we can combine that with news releases so people know how to reach us and give us their comments. Or, and the very minimum the Board would need to do would be that public hearing, similar to what we did for the project update, only we would give you the whole new project list. So keeping all of that in mind, if this is something the Board would want to consider, we also have, you know, notification and preparation timelines. So we would need to notify the Department of Revenue by October 1st if we want to extend that sales tax starting the following January 1st. You need to give them a full quarter notice so they can give notice to the businesses throughout Stearns County. And then, of course, we need some time to prepare those plans if we are, if we would extend it, if we needed to prepare plans for 2023 and beyond, or if we just collect for a year and then load up 2024 and beyond, if that's something that we wanted to do. So again, today, I don't expect any decisions to be made. This is more as a, something to get the discussion started. I know we have a strategic planning session coming up, and perhaps we want some discussion there. So to keep, questions to keep in the back of your mind that we have is, does the Board even want to consider this? And then what type of public input process you would want to have? And again, I'm willing to go out into the county if that's what the Board believes is the best, necessary, or, like I said, a combination of online and in-person. I mean, we're open to that certainly. We want to be transparent as possible in this process. And so I don't know if you have any immediate questions for the Highway Department, or if you just want to take this all and kind of let it sit.
I'm kind of wondering, in addition to the questions you've posed, is what information do members need to make a decision on this? Commissioner Nott?
Well, I'm assuming you'll come back with the list of proposed projects.
Then the next, Madam Chair. Yeah, actually, before you answer, because part of what I was thinking, and you and I've talked about this a little bit, is if we extend it, I mean, you've given us some information that I was interested in, like what was the impact on the levy? So we saw a positive impact, and given the number of people who come through our area, and some of our shopping patterns have changed. I know you and I've talked about that. It's like, okay, I got to shop in Stearns. But, so we've got that information. What projects, if it's at a quarter cent? What projects, if it's at something higher or at a half cent? And what capacity do you have to help us understand that? And then plus, we've got all this other questions about additional resources from elsewhere. So it's part of what I'm wondering.
So initially, I planned to come with the road programs for every option, similar to what we did last time when the Board was considering it, and I opted today to go for a little bit of a less is more rather than a complete information overload. So my next step would be to put together road program scenarios. Now, if today the Board said absolutely not, then I would save myself that time and effort of our staff. So that would be our next step, is to go through, show which projects could be advanced in the road program, because we do have some resurfacing that's further out, that it would be nice if we could move it up a year or two. And I can give those scenarios so the Board would have side-by-side options to see what those impacts would be. And at that point, too, then we would give you an estimate of how much of that engineering work we would potentially have to hire out.
Thank you. Commissioner Nott?
I guess I myself would like to at least see the quarter percent stay in place. I mean, it's gotten us more movement than we would have without it, and at this point, you know, because of revenue stream coming in, I don't foresee us needing to go any higher than the quarter percent.
Commissioner Persky?
I'll echo that. I go back to when we passed this, you know, we were split between zero and a half. Do we compromise at a quarter? And I think, too, that taxpayers are stressed enough, and holding it at a quarter would allow us to get things to continually get done, opposed to backing it off and not being able to complete projects we want. But there's a never-ending thirst in transportation, and, you know, to quench that thirst takes a lot of water, and there just not seem to be enough water out there. But I would be okay with a quarter, probably.
Well, and they tell me I have to eat it, but if I get close, it makes noises. I echo what both of you just said. For me, I've seen us be able to move further, and I do think being able to reduce the impact on the levy is important, and having people who are utilizing, coming through, all of the rest of that. I think that right now, I personally might land still at a quarter percent, but I am interested in seeing what it might look like so that we can actually make a more informed decision, because we do have some bigger projects that if we have the opportunity to look at over that multi-year level, we may say, okay, that would make enough of a difference that we might decide to go that route versus something else. But I just don't know yet. I don't feel like I have that information.
I think one of the other things, too, you know, is any of the federal money ever, will that trickle down to the county level? You know?
Right, that's part of my question. Right. What else could we have, or can it be, can it count then as federal match? Or what does that mean in terms of those bigger pictures? And, you know, I clearly, I mean, this is something that benefits, really good benefit for all parts of our county, and I definitely have constituents that want to know, when and where did they get anything in their area? So I'm just saying that's part of the reason why I'm curious about that. But Commissioner Lenzmeyer, Commissioner Mergen?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Keep the option open.
Yeah, I have a couple things. First of all, I think I'd like to see the open house-style meetings again in the county. Personally, I thought they were helpful last time I attended a few of those. And the other thing that concerns me here is something that I brought up at the time this was, was planned.
that I brought up at the time this was, was planned and put in place, is I was worried that the county levy going to roads would be reduced and transferred to other departments. And now we're finding out that happened. About $800,000 less in levy money going to the roads.
Madam Chair, if I could speak to that. One of the reasons, excuse me, that we went in that direction is it's not that our overall levy went down for the overall department, but we used some of that funding from our construction program to subsidize our maintenance operations. As you might recall, in 2021, our overall state aid revenues went down almost 9%. Originally, it was projected to go down about 15%. And so we needed to keep our, excuse me, our maintenance program whole, because we needed to have that funding in there. We have to have fuel, we have to have salt, obviously, operations, and our staffing. And in order to continue that, it was the Highway Department that proposed moving that. And obviously, making that whole in one year is quite a hit to the overall levy, and we know that. And then we also felt it was very important to try to add additional staff in our engineering department, just because of what we have been doing. Quite honestly, we have been overspending our consultant budget the last few years to try to keep up in delivering this program. So that is a good part of the reason why we've dropped that down to about 2.2 million from about, it averaged between 2.8 and 3 million, somewhere in there.
So that was a decision within your department?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
... 2022 budget process, originally, I tried to put that back in as well, but given the increase that was being proposed in the levy, based on that, we did back that off. But it, we do, we are trying to climb that back to that, kind of that $3 million level as well. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Persky?
Jody, I want to echo what Commissioner Mergan said. I would support, you know, doing an open house road show, and, you know, looking at the half-cent sales tax, but also looking for information about local needs, so that you're not just out there just soliciting information about the half, or a quarter cent percent.
Absolutely.
And I was wondering if it, if, you may have considered, given what you've got on there, maybe doing a blend of these, that you could do some road show, whether it's at the same level, given where we're at right now and how many people are using technology. But it'd be great to use the website as a tool. I was wondering about a virtual open house as well. There's some people for whom, especially as it's getting darker earlier, might have decided it. So I'm not trying to add, but if there's a way that in the mix that could be, that might be a good.
I think we could accomplish that. We would work with IAS to, I mean, potentially even record one of those sessions.
Oh, that's true.
And have that out there, and then have the opportunity for comment. We could do a Facebook Live type of event. I know several counties have done open houses in that manner during the worst part of the pandemic, so I can certainly learn from what other people have done.
So potentially, it could be in-person open houses, and people, like theoretically, today, somebody could participate virtually. Okay, that'd be great.
I kind of heard two things, you know, that you could reduce the levy, now that they want to keep the levy there. But it's obvious to me that if you could, you could eliminate the need for property tax levy to fund road construction.
Right.
If you increased to the half percent. I don't know if that's, you know, what anybody would want to do, but there's certainly the capacity in the sales tax to do that.
And I think, as we're, we're looking at our options, what are the impact on the levy? I mean, we want consistent funding. We want to make sure that we're able to do the projects we need. We like the fact we're able to get to some things faster, especially because we haven't been able to really rely on our, our other funding partners to come through. So I think if you can bring back to us what the potential impacts are, so we could decide that, because clearly, we've got people from other counties that are participating in the sales tax that do not participate. They participate in the sales tax and utilize our roads and bridges, but they do not participate in our property taxes. So I'd be interested in seeing what that would look like. Any other questions for the Highway Department? Is there putting anything together to come back? Okay, Steve?
This may not be for the Highway, but does the City of St. Cloud have one of these going to?
Yeah.
A low one.
Commissioner Natch, the City of St. Cloud has a half a percent local option sales tax, and about 60% of it is dedicated to transportation. And the other portions of it are dedicated to other things like parks and trails, the airport, and something else. But the bulk of, the bulk of the local option sales tax for the, for the region, for the cities in the region, it's not just the City of St. Cloud, doesn't go to transportation.
Right. So there's opportunities to actually leverage projects, as those of you who've participated in the APO know.
So that half percent, I, just to put in perspective, I think probably is raising $10 million in that neighborhood.
And it had helped with the Aquatic Center, and the Civic Center, and a few other things like that. Things that people would normally think of, instead of going to the legislature to ask for bonding, things that would be local. But in part, it's been on the transportation side for the same reason as us, that the funds have, that have often been there from the state or federal government, have not kept up, and the opportunity to have people coming through the communities, helping to pay for the roads that they are riding, driving on. Including freight. Okay, thank you. Really appreciate it. Does that give you enough?
That does. Thank you. And I have no miscellaneous unless anyone has anything for me.
Great. Well, we'll look forward to additional information.
Thank you.
Great. Environmental Services. So, Sauk River watershed plan.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Good to see you.
I'm Becky Schlorf, the Ag and Water Resources Division Supervisor. I have two agenda items for you related to the Sauk River, one watershed, one plan. The first item is to adopt a resolution for implementation, and I'm going to have Cole Lowen give the presentation on that.
Good morning, Mr. Lowen. Good to see you.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. As was stated, my name is Cole Lowen. I'm an environmental specialist with the Environmental Services Department. I'm going to take just a few minutes to do kind of a broad overview of what's been done to develop the Sauk River Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan, commonly referred to as a one watershed, one plan. All right. All right, I'll just go ahead and walk through it. Hopefully, you have copies of it in your packets. So I'm going to provide a quick refresher of what a comprehensive watershed management plan is. I'll review the details of the development of that plan. I'll provide a highlight of the plan's contents, and then I'll go over next steps. So Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan, it's a unified water resource plan, replaces the old paradigm of water resource planning, where we had several plans that would cover the same geographic area. Common examples being the watershed district would have its own plan, the county would have its own plan. And since watersheds don't follow the same political boundaries, you could have four, you could have four county water plans all involved in the same watershed. Now we're moving towards a unified plan approach. They use current science, data, broad stakeholder feedback to establish a shared vision for what we want the water resources to be in that watershed, and that's done to protect and restore the water resources. This results in reducing redundancy, it improves collaboration amongst the partners, and it makes a more effective use of our limited resources. And the plans themselves don't change the individual powers and responsibilities of the partners that make up the group working together under those unified plans. They each maintain their own powers and responsibilities. The planning process began in 2017, went through 2018 through 2020. The pandemic did slow the process down a little bit, so overall, it took about two and a half years. There were nine key stakeholders involved, Douglas, Todd, Pope, Stearns Counties, along with the respective soil and water conservation districts, and then the Sauk River Watershed District. And then there were, the state agencies were involved, the common alphabet soup ones, Board of Water and Soil Resources, Pollution Control, Department of Natural Resources, Department of Health, Department of Ag. And then we also had several non-governmental organizations were involved, such as the Nature Conservancy, Pheasants Forever, Stearns Coalition and Lake Association. In March of this year, I should back up, in February this year, the policy committee that was established recommended approving the plan. They sent it to each of the individual governing boards to recommend sending it to the state. That was done by this board in March of this year. And then on August 26, the State Board of Water and Soil Resources did approve the plan, and now it comes back to each of the individual governing boards to adopt it at a local level. Sweet. All right, that's nice. So the plan establishes a shared vision of a resilient landscape that balances a healthy ecosystem with a vibrant economy for generations to come. It aggregates a wealth of existing information and data, and identifies the priority resource concerns that are going to be addressed within the 10-year period. In the case of the Sauk, the two main priority resource concerns are altered hydrology and sediment and nutrient impairments. Altered hydrology, think of, as urbanization happens, you start to sprawl out, you're generating stormwater runoff in areas where the stormwater used to go into the ground. That can cause problems downstream. Another common example is when you tile a field, that field used, the water used to soak into the ground, now it's being transported by the tile system. That can cause problems downstream. Sediment nutrient impairments, those are the common ones. So it could be, it could be a section of the river is sloughing off, and all that sediment's now washing to the river. That causes water resource concerns. It could be, you have an upstream wetland that, over time, has absorbed sediment from runoff upstream, and now it no longer can hold that sediment anymore. It's starting to export phosphorus downstream. That's an example of some of the resource concerns we see in the watershed. The plan notes strategies and actions to accomplish the goals stated in the plan, such as outreach and education programs, existing regulatory controls, capital projects, as well as debt acquisition and management efforts. And the plan prioritizes which efforts should be focused on first, provides cost estimates to implement the plan, gives details on available funding sources, and provides a structure for plan implementation amongst partners. So for today, staff's recommending the board consider three things. One, resolve to adopt the management plan. The plan will then become the county water plan for the portion of the Sauk River in Stearns County, that's roughly 49% of the county's landmass. Resolve to adopt the Joint Powers Collaborative Agreement, which will form a collaboration of local partners to implement the plan. That's very similar to what was done in the Norfolk. And then support serving as the fiscal agent for the collaborative, which was requested by the policy committee during plan development. And then in the future, there'll be a couple other steps. There'll be a fiscal agent agreement that will be developed for other partners in the collaborative to work together. That agreement would between Stearns County and Stearns Soil and Water Conservation District, or Stearns County and Sauk River Watershed District, governing how the money that will be coming from the state will be utilized. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to take any questions.
Commissioner Natch, do you have anything you want to?
Yeah, I just want to thank Cole for bringing this up today for us to look at. Going back, you know, we had decided on the collaborative versus the joint powers, because joint powers create another layer of government, basically, on it. So there's a little more flexibility for all the parties involved, you know, so it's not becoming a whole separate levying authority type position again. So, so we, you know, it took us almost three years to get through this. And, you know, there were a lot of issues that came up with different parties involved, which, you know, I feel pretty good that, after all this time, we managed to work through to bring everybody, because everybody was together, it kind of started separating with, I think, COVID stretched it out, and then bringing it back together. And I think, you know, from my point of view, it appears, you know, all parties are, yeah, this is going to be the best for the watershed as a whole. And the more you can get rid of duplicative processes, it should be more cost efficient, so more money goes for the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish here.
Thank you. Questions, comments, motion?
I guess I'd move approval of the plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Natch.
I'll second. I've got questions after the vote.
Great.
After the vote?
After the vote, oh, okay. All right. So we'll do the plan first, and then we've got the collaborative, and then we have the fiscal agent, if I got that correct.
The third one, the fiscal agent, you don't need to vote on today. It's more of acknowledging that you support taking on that role when the time comes.
All right. There's a motion, a second. Are there other questions or comments at this time, either for Cole or for Commissioner Natch? Seeing none, all in favor of adopting the plan, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, saying nay. Okay. You have a question, Commissioner Persky, before we get to the second one.
Cole, say, a couple of years ago, you know, we were implementing, maybe even several years ago, the buffers across Stearns County, and we had 98, 99% compliance. There were some of those issues that weren't resolved. Do you know, have those issues been resolved? We had, I think, mitigation with perhaps a few farmers and...
Yeah, my understanding is we are near or at 100%. I would have to ask our Soil and Water Conservation District colleagues where we're at. They actually do that compliance check. I do know that at this point, there should be, any of those that we were waiting on, we should have some type of agreement to bring them into compliance. It doesn't mean that they put in a buffer. It could very well likely mean they did a water and sediment control basin, or something else on the landscape that provided the benefit of the buffer or greater.
Okay. And again, we just appreciate the cooperation with the landowners there. And the other question is, with tiling, I've noticed a good amount of tiling going on in western Stearns County. Is there a limit to which, how much area can be tiled? Is there a capacity for those ditches and for the watershed at which they reach, and then there's a limitation, or they have to apply for a permit with the tiling, and whether or not they get that?
Sure. So it depends, for the drainage authority, what type of rules they have in place for their drainage, or it could be a public, it could be a private system, in which case, there's no rules in place unless they're trying to drain a wetland, and then the Wetland Conservation Act comes into play. Yes, there can be instances where there is a capacity concern. Adding tiling to the system while not properly accounting for what the system can handle can cause flooding issues eventually. That's really the responsibility to the drainage authority that manages that system, to understand their system. There are some ditches in the, in the county. My understanding from the, from Sauk River Watershed District, who's the drainage authority over most of those in western Stearns County, they do have concerns about additional tiling coming in. There has been discussions on whether they need to incorporate some rules to control rates. Doesn't mean you can't tile. It may mean, for example, okay, you can tile, but it has to be certain size, or it has to be a controlled system, so some type of stop gate at the end of it, so at certain times of year, you have to shut it off, or you can open it up, which actually, a lot of new systems are going that way anyway, because it actually improves yields in the long term. You let the water out when you don't want the water, but then you want the water to stick around later in the year when our rains aren't necessarily keeping up. So we are seeing more of those systems coming in as well.
Good questions. We do have one more item, if this relates to the one watershed, one plan on this, is approving the collaborative agreement. It's certainly something we've talked about being important before, so we need a motion on that as well.
I'll move the recommended action.
Thank you, Commissioner Natch. Is there a second?
Persky, second.
Thank you, Commissioner Persky. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, signify by saying nay. Okay, the motion's approved. Thank you. Thank you for your work. I understand you really made a difference in helping all of the different entities involved to get to this place.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Got one more item, I think. Go ahead. Can we just have a little bit of a nod or something from the county board in favor of being the fiscal agent?
About the interest. I know we're not supposed to be voting, but, right, but just... Interest or willingness?
That there's no concerns. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Benson?
Good morning, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. I have item G3, which is the receipt of the Select Committee on Recycling and Environment, other words, SCORE. So the county receives the SCORE grant two times a year, and we have that going through an automatic approval payment system. And the auditor accepts the SCORE grant at this time. So we had a one-year approval on that process before, and now the next contract that essentially we signed is a four-year, or five-year agreement. So I won't be coming back to you to tell you that we've received the money, but we can do those updates with our other SCORE reports. Those SCORE dollars are used for our HHW programming, advertising, disposal costs, supplies, mobile programs, et cetera. We receive about $450,000 per year from the state for those programs. So just letting you know that we received those dollars, and we're glad that the legislature decided to keep those funds moving in that direction. So that's what I have for you today. If you have any questions, I can certainly take them, and then maybe I can answer them, or I bring back the person who can't answer them.
Are there any questions, Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
This is a five-year grant as opposed to, historically, we did this annually, or?
We would get the money annually, and the state has changed the process. So last year, they gave us the funds. Instead of us coming to the board to receive the funds, they started sending them through to the auditor's office. So Randy signs for those funds. We get payment twice a year. And now, instead of doing just, I think they wanted to do a test run last year to make sure it worked right, and now they're going to do it on a five-year period. So we'll receive those funds twice a year for the next five years without them telling us each year to renew or have the auditor sign it.
And we'll continue to get updates and be able to ask questions.
Yep, otherwise, it's a long period of time. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
My observation on this is that, I'm wondering if we're not confusing efficiency with flexibility. It isn't as if we don't realize that there, this is an area of evolving technology, evolving processes. And I'm wondering if locking ourselves into a five-year plan, should any of those things happen, and they always seem to, prevents us from taking advantage of those types of things. Nothing comes to mind immediately as I consider this, but there's, in this case, there's finer minds in the department and at the DAS that could give rational examples of where this has happened. Because this is an area, you don't think of solid waste as evolving technology. It's easy to do it in terms of electronic medium and so forth. But it is an area that changes. So I'm just wondering if doing and locking ourselves into five years, we're not cheating ourselves potentially.
So Ms. Benson, with that, I mean, I think this is part of your question, but just to make it explicit too, what kind of flexibility do we have within this? Or is it really locking us in? Because I think, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, that's a really important question.
Chair Clark, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, what this is, is just that we're receiving the payment automatically. The good news is, we still come back with the SCORE budget annually. So that annual review process will go through the kinds of budgeting and projects and programs that we think will be evolving. Should we be doing more in organics? Should we be partnering with Tri-County? As the biodigester piece starts moving forward, we've got a lot of things evolving. So this is just the money coming in, in a different format than it used to come. And all of the programming still goes through the SCORE budgeting process. So you see that in March. We typically do that annually. We will continue to do that annually and talk about all the programs that are changing and/or evolving technology. We know this is definitely an area that we're going to see new innovation, and we are expecting that. So the budget will be reviewed with you annually. So the months, the money is just coming in, in a more regular format. And how we spend the money still is up to the board and the programming, which will be done in March. So this is just receipt of the funds, and for the next five years, we know how those dollars will be coming in and what to expect, but the budgeting process will happen in March.
So maybe a follow-up question is, the state hasn't then put prescriptions around this? We're not locked into something, which I think, when we see five years of accepting payments this way, it almost seems like it could be that way. But I'm hearing you say, no.
Right, the SCORE, the criteria for spending the SCORE dollars has not changed. So we still have a significant amount of flexibility in using those dollars. When we adapt to changing technology, we look at that annually. So is it appropriate for us to do advertising for program areas? Should we be evolving the mobile program? Should we be looking at things differently? Those are all part of the annual budgeting process. So I feel like the legislature hasn't changed the rules on how we deal with the money or how we address it. So that flexibility still exists, which is, I think, important to us, that we have that ability to remain flexible and use those dollars, but come back to you as a board annually on those budgeted items.
So is this more than the state has determined that we don't have to go through a process every year to receive these?
Yes.
Okay. So it's more on the how we're actually getting the funds versus how we're applying the criteria?
Correct.
We're really glad you brought that up, Commissioner Lenzmeyer.
So different government units, different counties would be able to use SCORE funding to encourage different technologies. For example, what Sterns County does or doesn't do isn't limited by, say, what Olmsted County's doing. Different parts of the state have different opportunities. For example, we don't see much sugar beet waste around here, you know?
Yeah.
So, all right, as long as that's the case, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay. Did you have a question, Commissioner Persky?
Shelley, and so to that point, other counties that use our household hazardous waste, and are they picking up a tab, part of their SCORE dollars coming to us to?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So as we have, and Morrison County has approached us on that process too. So Lacks, Benton, Sherburne, Sterns, there's one other county, I think, that uses our services. We do collect per car, so we know how many go through. Then they typically send us their SCORE dollars based on the number of cars that have gone through. So it's a process. We're glad that the state has somewhat automated that process just for money and haven't put any restrictions on us past where we were before. So we'll bring those budgets items back to you and have that conversation. I expect that we will have more pilots and innovation as we go forward.
Great. Well, thank you for that information. And with that, we're going to take, we're scheduled to take a short break, so we're going to take a short break.
Thank you.
Steve, we have, you know, when we were instituting those buffers, you know, we had some folks that were quite, yeah.
All right, yes, the mics are going. So we're back in session, turning it over to Dr. Williams for a couple items from administration.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This first item is increasing citizen voices and diversity on our committees. It begins on packet page 142, I believe. 142, yes. And this, as you know, this started during our strategic planning process last year, and we wanted to actually consider ways that we might be able to get some additional diversity on our boards and committees, recognizing that it was, that our committees are somewhat dominated by males and little older males, not that there's anything wrong with that, but but anyway, that's how this all started. And rather than just say that we wanted to increase diversity on our committees, we actually went about and looked at some of our policies and procedures surrounding how we, how our committees work and what our appointment procedures were. And so we formulated a number of suggestions, I think, that created a discussion back in July. And there was really two areas that we talked about. One is committees that have, when is it appropriate to have county commissioners serving on advisory committees? And what is the impact of that, both positive and potentially, there's drawbacks? And then, and then really focused on the appointment process. And so there was a discussion there, and probably about an hour-long discussion, as I recall, with the board, with that white paper as a guide. And then after that, we created a summary of that larger document and allowed people that are appointed to our committees to make comments. And so we did get some comments back from various committees and committee members. And from that, you can see, I created a resolution that alters some of the, some of the alters and deletes some of those ideas that were brought forward in July. And so before you is, is a resolution that would do a number of things. And it kind of changes a little bit the appointment process that really gives you more information as you're making appointments at the end of the year. It does require each committee to select a different chair every couple of years. And if you recall, one of the suggestions was to rotate. This waters that down a little bit. And each committee would select a vice chair. We would suggest that we would eliminate the ability for someone to be appointed after they fulfill three terms or they meet their term limit. The board has, and it is in policy that if there's a one-year waiting period, the person could be reappointed to that board again. This would eliminate that ability. And if you recall, one of the, one of the suggestions was to reduce the term limits from three terms down to two terms. That is not included in this resolution. There's a couple of committees here that suggested that we would not have a commissioner on. And then currently, the bylaws and the ordinance that creates the Park Commission has the Board of Commissioners liaison as a voting member. And this would alter that, so that liaison is a non-voting member. If we do that, there's also a number of things within that Park Commission ordinance that we would change to and update. It hasn't really been looked at for a long time. But that specifically is related to the committee. But that specifically is related to the, to the committee. And then there was a few committees there, the Delinquent Refuge, the Wetland Appeals, and the Environmental Service Appeals, that I, I'm not so sure we really need to make changes there. So this resolution just says we'll take a, take a closer look at that. And then it does, the last point in the resolution says that we'll strive to make appointments that are 50% female, 10% people of color. And I would bring forward two other things. One related to how we posed this discussion to begin with, we talked about age as well. And so there's nothing in here about age. That may be something that the board wants to consider that we include in that last number 11 in the resolution, if you're going to adopt something like this. And the other thing is that, I didn't realize it really until we got towards the end of this, is that, is that we do allow people to be appointed to more than one committee. And I think the board has, in practice, tried not to do that, but that's not in your policy. And that, that could be something that you could add here that would, you know, force you to consider other people, force you to get some different voices at some of these. We don't have very many of those, but there are a couple of people that do serve on more than one committee. So that's, in a nutshell, at least what I brought forward based on both your initial discussion in July, some of the feedback we got from boards and committees. And you may or may not want to adopt everything that's in this resolution. And as I said, you might want to consider something about not allowing people to be on more than one, and you might want to do something regarding age.
Commissioner Lunsford.
I don't think that's a huge consideration. Understand that some of what various committees do are related to the functions of other committees. So I wouldn't want to see us adopt a policy that we would totally prohibit that. If you want a policy that discourages that, I, I think that might be a more appropriate approach on the surface. It goes, wow, we can't have, you know, these folks on all of these, same folks on all these committees. Realize there are cases where that has some merit. And that's all I have in terms of that. But I don't know, you'd wordsmith that or.
I was kind of wondering about that, too, in terms of the discouraging, except for there are a couple of places where, for example, the chairs of the Human Service Task Force or subboards, they serve on the Human Services Board, so by nature, they'd need to be. Or you've got somebody from the Planning Commission that serves on the Board of Adjustment. That, those, certainly those ones make sense. We do have somebody right now, I didn't even realize it, if you all looked at the list, who is on things that are not necessarily connected, who's a wonderful person, but it means there's four or five slots that somebody else, many other people could be. So, and then plus, there's occasions where maybe we can't find anybody and somebody is willing. So I think if, when I was thinking about it, if there's a way to say where possible, you know, we're going to want to be broadening it, but not make it a totally done deal.
You want to.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, was there a follow-up on that, Commissioner Lunsford?
Just maybe a cap, you know, no more than two committees.
Oh, you could do that, sure.
But it does happen where there's merit.
Right, absolutely. Commissioner Mergen and then Commissioner Persky.
Each commissioner gets to appoint approximately one-fifth of the appointees here. And I'm thinking it should be up to that commissioner as to what they want in their district. Now, I personally made a choice of trying to have a person serve on no more than one committee when I came on. And, because when I come on, there was at least one person that was on at least a half a dozen committees. And, and I've got that down now to where there's only one person left that's on two committees. And it took a fair amount of recruiting, but it can be done. But that should be, I think, each commissioner's decision. Because we've got, on this board, we've got a pretty good diversity of philosophies, I think, as you go through the districts in all areas. So, you know, I, I'm not sure we have anything that's broken here. Although I would support, you know, some of the, maybe there are some of these places where we don't need a commissioner sitting on the board.
I do think, when I look at our, our membership, it, it still doesn't reflect our population. And so if we're hoping to move, that's got to be something that's more than just one of us at any given time trying to do it. So it's not just about ideology, it's also about what other skills or backgrounds. You know, again, we have no women on the Planning Commission, which is frankly, kind of stunning in 2021. So, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I think we're all trying to be thoughtful, and we're all trying to recruit. And I hope you're telling people that live in my area, hey, you might be interested in this, just like I'll tell people in your area, you should contact Commissioner Mergen. But if you look at the list, there are a number of other ones that it isn't, it isn't just us doing it, it's other people. So for example, I was talking to Dr. Williams about the Dairy Advisory Committee. In a lot of ways, they really are recruiting their own members. And sometimes that can be a challenge about rotation, et cetera. They're in a way a bit more like the AIS Committee, that we don't actually appoint anybody to. So there's, there's a variety or a mix of things. So that's just something for us to be considering. I'm not sure that you and I are actually very far apart on what we're personally trying to do, but it's, if, as we have, through our strategic planning and our other work, as we're trying to get more newer people involved or more different people, it's a way for us to do that. It's certainly not lost on me either, that if we looked at a couple of the people on our, currently on our Human Services Advisory Committee that have been on quite a long time, happen to be community members of color, who might choose to take their expertise and move on to another, as well as somebody who's on like five different things. Commissioner Persky.
Yes, I've got to, first of all, I want to thank those folks that serve. I mean, we've got a lot of folks out there that, you know, put that time in. And, you know, people that are working oftentimes, you know, appreciate the evenings, what they can do. But when you have to go to a meeting, sometimes for a couple hours, that takes away from what you'd like to be doing. So, you know, the efforts of those people that are volunteering are greatly appreciated. Just looking at the proposal that we have here, what I would be concerned about is losing any flexibility that we have within the board and within constructing the commissions or boards. And, and so I, I by all means support the ideas that they are, but to have it in writing and say that we must, that maybe takes away our flexibility. For example, with the, the two-year term on a, on a chair, you know, the chair might be very comfortable serving maybe three or four years, and, and all the other members would rather not even be chairing, and that's up to them. But I can see these being perhaps more as the recommendation. On the equity and diversity, the same thing is true there. I think we, we need to promote equity and diversity throughout the entire county. And that, that is something that we should be doing regardless of whether we're picking boards or whether we're hiring peoples for the Sheriff's Department. And, and so I think that's something we should be striving to do, but we don't necessarily have to put that as, as a parameter in a guideline.
Good question on that. This says strive, this doesn't say shall.
Right, right.
So are you okay with it, with striving to?
Well, but I think.
Because if we don't have any kind of an intent, we clearly haven't necessarily done that great in some of the years.
Absolutely. I, I agree with you, but I think that that's where we are as a county, though I think that stands for our entire policy, whether it be people that work at the, at the desk in front, people in the Sheriff's Department, people in any of the other departments, we strive for that, so.
Right, so this simply says we strive.
Okay, yeah.
Commissioner Natch.
Anyway, and so.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
No, and so what I'm saying is that I, I do appreciate these changes, but I can't blanketly support everyone we've got here. I do also appreciate going from, we were looking at changing it to six years, keeping it at nine, just so that within like, for example, the Parks Department, we have three men, three women on there. And I hate to get rid of the balance that we have there, just because a couple of the women would necessarily timeout. They do a great job, and it might be difficult to replace them again. So again, I'm concerned about being flexible and being able to build the best group within citizenship that we have.
Commissioner Natch.
Okay, so I really like under item number one, the last, the one sentence where also allow applicants apply for appointments to committees by area of interest rather than specific committee. Then I think that there's going to be a pool there, you know, that we can draw off of, instead of just saying, well, I just want to do the Parks or, you know, if you can do the area of interest, then, then there's more flexibility there, maybe they fit into two or three of the slots. The other one that I'm kind of, I just thought of it this morning, is number 11 on there, you know, trying to achieve 50% female, 10% people of color on each committee. Obviously, each committee is an odd number, you know, so to achieve that, I would rather maybe see a more generic version of achieve an equitable, this is what I just wrote down before, achieve an equitable makeup of the county's current population, if that's the right terminology, or, you know, instead of trying to specifically, you know, state a gender or race or something like that.
For each committee, since that might be hard, since some of ours are less than 10 people anyways.
Right, so.
So I think that's a good idea.
That was just a thought I had this morning, after I read the percentages, I thought, well, wouldn't it be easier just not? Because then, in my opinion, now we're striving for that, but do we get hung up then on the 50, or we need to have, you know, one person of color?
So then overall, in the grouping, we would be attempting.
Makes full sense.
Yeah, I think that makes, that makes a lot of sense. And an example on your one, under number one, we had somebody from District One who had applied for the Planning Commission in mid, kind of midterm, so we obviously had somebody that was there. But there was a question about the Board of Adjustment, we had a person leave, and how are we going to recruit for that? And this person ended up being interested. I think she originally would have said, if it had been kind of a broader grouping, she might have been interested in any of those areas. Commissioner Mergen.
Yeah, I'm looking at the, select a different chair every two years. I'd be okay with that, as long as, I think it was in here somewhere, I've lost it now, as a person can, doesn't have to accept, they can bypass. And so it would go through that rotation if they're not comfortable with it. I'd, I'd be okay with that, as long as that's allowed in there, that they, any person can bypass. And the only way that person would be reelected is if everybody bypassed. And then the other area of concern to me is that a person cannot be reappointed after one year off. That's not going to happen very often anyway, because if you appoint somebody new, they're on for a three-year term. And the only way that would really happen is you end up with a bind where the new person you appointed would resign or something for some reason. So really, it would, most cases, it would be a three-year wait period at least before somebody'd come back on.
And I think this was the.
It'd be a rare occasion where it would be one year.
Okay. And I was asking for some information about how often, does either it after one year period happening?
I remember once.
So I was curious about that myself.
I, I remember once, and I think that was because of a person that got reappointed or got appointed resigned for some personal reasons.
So somebody came back on?
Yeah, and then the person came back on because it was needed to be done quickly, or there was no one else there.
It might be another good example of a situation where where possible, we don't want to have somebody come, you know, we want to encourage new people, but perhaps there's occasions where eventually somebody else is, they are the right person to be coming back on. And maybe that goes back to the flexibility case.
I have no objection to that, but to blatantly say they can't come back on, I would object to.
Okay. Commissioner Natch.
Yeah, I know of one instance, you know, where we couldn't find an appointment for a district, and it went a year, and then they turned around and asked the person if they would like to come back on, which they did. But I was going to go back to the chair scenario. This is one reason where I would like to see it, the option be there, you know, to rotate the chair, because sometimes you get a new appointment, and everybody says, well, that person's always been the chair, so we just let them be the chair.
Yep.
Whereas, you know, a new person come in, after a couple of years, might say, oh, it'd been kind of nice to be the chair. But, you know, you kind of get stuck in that groove, where all of a sudden, it's like, well, no, this person's chair. And granted, if you've got term limits, you know, that's going to change anyway over time, but.
Yeah, I could think of a couple of just fabulous people, and again, on a couple of the human service-related ones, that people have just made that be the default. So frankly, we might even have gotten the feedback, because somebody doesn't feel comfortable saying, well, you know, it'd be like saying, hey, Joe does a really great job, so I don't want to rock the boat and say that, hey, I'd like to. We did find in a couple of different occasions that, you know, if there was some, you know, conversations with people about, yes, you know, other people can do this, then they rotated. They actually did like that. I like the idea of having, putting in practice, that some, some of our boards and commissions do in their bylaws have a vice chair, some don't. And it seems like a really good idea to have that, so that we know if somebody can't be there, that they're not, kind of trying to figure out who's going to do that meeting. I like that, too.
I would have no objection to that either, that there's a vice chair.
And the, the, if I recall correctly, and Dr. Williams, maybe you can tell us if I read it wrong, but the suggestion at this point about a chair not serving more than two years consecutively, being able to go back on, but that it also could be more is in there, that if a group decided they want to do like what we do and rotate every year, they could do that. Is that correct? Is that a year?
Ma'am, I'm sure, yes, that was the intent, that it could be chair only one year, but we would say only two years at a time.
Right. Yes, Commissioner Persky.
Yeah, that does make it more, more palatable to allow them then to come back, especially if somebody comes on, does not like the position, and then any of the other members really are reluctant to come on his chair, then that person can come back. So I guess I could be fine with that. But definitely allow it to be a two-year term at least.
And I think one of the things I like about it is, if you think about it, for in a number of ways, there may be, we do have people who have, you know, a fair amount of expertise or experience coming in. We also have some people who may be a bit newer and can learn how to do those leadership functions. And it, you know, gives us an opportunity to help grow that breadth. You know, there may end up being some people who decide to go run for a township supervisor or a city counselor, or heaven forbid, a county commissioner at some point, but giving them that opportunity to, to develop those skills to, you know, both for us as well as staff, encouraging people to be willing to step forward. Let's face it, it's not that hard to learn how to chair a meeting, but they do need to have tools so they can feel comfortable with that. It looks like you're taking some notes. Is there anything? I'm trying to think if we were looking through.
Commissioner.
Commissioner, wait a second. I think Commissioner Natch's suggestion about that last one, that it wouldn't be related just to committees, was something to be considering, the language on. Commissioner Mergen.
Yeah, there are a couple of these, too, where I think probably no county commissioner under tax abatement committee, and some of those things, I think I could support probably. And which other one? Aquatic invasive species? I don't know, does anybody have feelings?
Yeah, so actually, that's the award panel, it's not the actual committee. We do have a aquatic invasive species committee. I happen to, Commissioner Merrick had served on this award panel, and then I have done it since I came on. We actually have a pretty active group of people. It's not an official committee, they really do provide technical assistance to staff, people from different lakes, lake associations, et cetera. They, they do a very good job. I don't see anybody from Environmental Services here. But once a year, as the applications come in for those grants, we have a citizen group who goes through them all, makes a recommendation, and then there's a panel of three that accept or suggests they change. As best I can tell, they always accept, and then bring it to the board. I will say, I've learned a lot, but when we talk about not getting two bites on the apple, technically, our board member on their votes on that, or at least it's a consensus. So while I could see still attending because of interest, I don't think we need to have it. It kind of violates our, we don't want people having two bites at the apple position. So I would be okay with going off the, but I want to be clear, it's not, we don't appoint the actual committee, that's the award committee. Commissioner Persky.
Yeah, let's go back to number two. I just, for clarification, require each committee to select a different chair at least every two years?
Vice chair. Oh, oh, sorry, oh, two, sorry.
But I do believe we should have that chair elected every.
But I do believe we should have that chair elected every year, so that you're not elected to a two-year term, that you're elected annually, and then you can serve a second term.
So that fits closer with what Commissioner Mergen brought up, too. Okay.
And then, Commissioner Persky, that was the intent here. Maybe it's not clear, but we would-
But somebody could serve two consecutive terms.
They would, committees would select a chair annually.
Every, correct.
But you would only allow a chair to be in that for two years at a time.
And probably something in there, too, saying a person can bypass, they're not comfortable.
Well, Commissioner Mergen, under this language, it doesn't rotate. It wouldn't rotate. It would still be the choice of the committee, but you can only have a chair for two years, and then they're going to have to have at least a break.
So for example, community corrections-
You wouldn't be forcing anybody to be chair.
Right. So using, for example, community corrections advisory board had a, well, they've got something in there that says how long somebody could be. It's longer than that. Somebody's done a really good job, but that person timed out. And then guess what? Somebody else was willing to do it. So you could, you could change every year, but you wouldn't force them to.
Yeah, we need to clarify this language. I can see that.
Okay. So is that something that we'd want you to bring back, or can we approve some things in cons? I mean, it probably makes sense to bring that back.
What the intent, Madam Chair and Commissioners, the intent here was, you know, that, that a lot of, some of this is going to have to come back to you. For example, if we change the park ordinance and the park, you know, that's going to have to come back to the board. And some of these, some of these are policies that we would put in place. So the language here doesn't have to be perfect, as long as you understand the intent.
And we don't need to make a decision on this.
And you don't need to make a decision either.
Okay. Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, Madam Chair, first of all, Mike, I do support that change on the, on the park board, so that we would have the seven members. So I think that makes sense. But then just going to, to number three, if we just put chair and vice chair on an annual basis, does that take care of it?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. I was also wondering, and hopefully this doesn't feel more like a parking lot kind of thing. It would be great to have some tools, whether it's Janet or somebody else gives us a few tools for helping in recruiting. I think that we all try hard to find people. Mike and I were talking about this, just, there's only so many people that are regularly going to look at our website. I know I found recently, usually the library board, I'm looking at you, Lee, because the library board is really a sought-after position to be on, but I don't know if it was COVID or what, but people weren't necessarily noticing the notices. But so if there's something, you know, that relates to either, you know, social media or emails, or when we're talking to other groups, what are the kinds of ways that we can help educate others since that is, since we do have that function of doing appointments, just to generate more people being aware that this is an interest. It'll be a lot easier to get to some of those numbers if they're even aware that this is possible. Commissioner Mergen?
Well, I personally keep a physical list of everybody that's expressed an interest of being on the board.
Which is great, there's people you probably don't know about. If they knew, they might contact you.
And, you know, what their areas, I mean, that's just my personal list physically.
So what I'm saying, I'd like some tools. If somebody else doesn't use them, that's fine, but it could help us let some other people know. I was actually surprised, like with the airport board, when we were going to that, how many people were out there that were really interested. And then frankly, how many more people were interested but didn't apply, because once they saw in the paper, there was a number of people applying. Well, we don't even know who those folks are, and it could help us, you know, we might have totally sufficient lists, but, you know, there's people out there, we could all say we know a lot of people, but let's face it, there's people we don't know. So that's all. I just would like some tools. It's not for this policy, it would be just helpful. Do you have enough guidance?
I think so.
Okay. Good discussion. And we've got, when are we going to be looking at make, I think you were going to try, or not, at the, right at the end of the year?
Yeah, Madam Chair, that's, that's why this is before you today, is that we were hoping to put some of these changes in place before you make your annual appointments at the end of the year. So if it's the board's direction to kind of take this conversation and retool this resolution and bring it back, that's fine.
Maybe for the next meeting. Okay.
By the next meeting or the meeting after that.
Okay, so we'd have time. Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Yeah, this, I came up with a couple of observations, but they're all related. We're not going to come up with a, a perfect solution, because we do want an element of flexibility on this. Don't let the ideal situation get in the way of a practical solution. Some of these boards, we need expertise, but can't let that get in the way of participation. If we leave the expertise up to just staff, we only get the benefit of their specific experience. So I'm thinking of a human services board where, if you look at the makeup of the human services board, all of those folks, or most of those folks are involved in some aspect of human services. And if that was a, a situation involving a committee with oversight of an industry or a business, we would certainly have people, probably sooner than later, citing conflict of interest. And yet, if somehow it's a nonprofit or one of our vendors that, or agencies that's involved in that, we don't think of it in that way. Does that have merit or not? I'm not sure. We've never, the good news is, is on that particular board, we haven't had a problem there. But I could see where citizens would say, well, you know, you do it for that board, how come you don't do it for this board? You're not going to come up with a perfect system here. Please hold the thought that whatever you come up with, the flexibility would be the byword. Some of the, we are not aware of the membership of some of the joint boards. I hear the notion of diversity now and then. I'm on a library board, and they're coming on strong in that area. So some of the discussion here makes it sound like that's not a consideration. But we're making progress in some areas. I'm not going to, well, the horse is approaching death, but you get the idea that this is what I see out there. Also, I get, sometimes being around a while gives you a weird perspective. When I first came on the board, we had to beat the bushes to get volunteers for these various boards, committees, commissions. Now, just as Terrell cited, gosh, we had the airport board, we had a couple dozen people that expressed an interest. So I don't know if what's happened, the personalities on this old gust body have become so desirable, people want to hang out with us. But nevertheless, getting volunteers is way easier than it used to be. So the world has changed, and I don't know if it's, folks are more aware of the implications of local decision-making or not, but this is a better situation than it used to be by far.
The other thing I just would like to note, I think you've just made a whole lot of really good points. This is true, particularly in elections, but it's also true with appointed boards, is that women often need to be asked. They need to be encouraged. And sometimes it, it's just, you could still see that difference. So that's where they, you know, making sure that people know, I know that you each must have stories like this. I know I've already had stories of people who are just so excited about having the opportunity to serve in some way. And so, you know, as we're thinking about it, that's not to say that we don't, I mean, I keep trying to figure out, you know, what else can we do for some of the people who are utilized, the people who've had long service in a number of ways, while we're also finding ways to have other, you know, maybe as much expertise, but just hasn't been there, or those next folks. And when we moved here from Arizona in 88, the first board that I got put on was the Community Ed Advisory Board. And I will tell you, at 26, I was significantly younger than everybody else, and watching Mark Sockry, and who was at the Boys and Girls Club then, and Dave Bargert, who was elsewhere, cutting deals. It was an eye-opener, but it also, I really learned a lot from those folks, and it helped me encourage other people to be engaged. So that's something else is where we're thinking about all of this, this moving forward. So, well, we'll look forward to you coming back with that, and us all continuing to talk, talk it up. I think we've got-
Hopefully.
-important work, right? And the conflict of interest piece is always something we should be just kind of trying to keep in mind, too. So if you're starting to see some issues popping up, we should take another look at that. So, next thing, broadband.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I really don't have a lot. I, I was hoping to have a little more progress on our request, whatever we end up calling this, that we're going to issue to the service providers, a request for negotiations or proposals, or whatever we end up calling it. But I did meet with our consultant yesterday, and we do have that RF, RF whatever nearly completed. So I just wanted to touch base with the board on this. If you recall, when we talked about the ARP dollars, which we have nearly $32 million, and we've, of course, as you know, appropriated some of those funds, but we talked about using as much as half of that to improve broadband throughout the, throughout the county. And so at that time, then, since the board seemed okay with that, we re-engaged our consultant and have created, like I say, we're almost complete with a, with a request that would be issued to the service providers. They would give back information on projects that they, they think make sense for the county, and then we would, we would go from there. At the same time, I think, once we found out what townships were involved, we would be requesting townships to commit some ARP dollars to those projects that are within their townships as well. So we're, the approach that we've, that we've, are going to take is to try to get the providers not to think about just those areas that they know they can make work. Because we have proposals today from all the, all four of the major providers, that, you know, we want to come in and do this area, we want to come in and do this area, you know, maybe cover 100 premises or, or 200 premises. The thought here is to break the county into four or five segments and sort of force them to focus on total segments that have, you know, that are more than, for lack of a better way, cherry picking those that they can make work. Now, and I think that should give us a better feel for really what the total needs are. It's a little, it's, it's different than how I think other counties and, and counties might be approaching it. And it may, and it may, and it may not work. I want to be upfront about that. We may not get a proposal to cover one of those great, one of those larger areas. But how we're going to ask that is, okay, if you were forced to look at that whole area, you know, how would you proceed in doing it? So there might, it might be a beginning. Yeah, we can do this part of it, and then in the future, if we can get a grant, then we'll finish it up, something like that. So and we're, and we're using, at this point, using $16 million, saying that we would commit $16 million to that. Now, you know, I'm not asking for any action or anything like that today. We'll come back to you with a final, with a draft, or a final draft of that RFP, and, and then ask for the board's approval to move through that. In the meantime, when we get this draft in a little bit more final position, final form, I think we should re-engage our broadband task force and have them look, look at that and kind of consider where we're going with it. And that'll help get the word out, too, about what we're doing. And Commissioner Natch has served on that, on that task force. And I don't, I think that makes sense, don't you, Steve, that we at least have one meeting with that task force and talk about it? It's kind of where we were heading anyway, when, when COVID hit, but we haven't met with that task force since the pandemic began.
What does Benton County think they're doing? I mean, I don't, there was a news item on that. And I'm not being critical of Benton, but allegedly, we get the same information they do. Do you understand what their initiative is, or what's going on?
Dr. Williams?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I think where they are is sort of where we were a few years back.
Okay.
They're doing a community survey, talking to providers. I mean, they're gearing up, I think, to use ARP dollars, just, just like we are. But, but they're doing some of that legwork that we did a couple of years ago.
Oh, okay.
Right. They're also, they, like, they haven't figured out kind of where the middle mile or last mile, or there's some opportunities that, whether it's the task force or other groups, whether it's GSDC or the work through the Initiative Foundation or Blandon or whoever, we've just got a lot more information. I just keep thinking about those 3,500 homes in Belgrade, Bruton, Elrosa area, and just that alone, you know? The other thing, as you were talking, it's, I don't know that we have a great way that we're getting the word out, but this just came across to me yesterday, was about making, really elevating the emergency broadband benefit, because there's a timeline on that right now until Congress actually passes there, that bipartisan infrastructure bill. So I mean, we've got kind of multiple pieces that we know are possibilities for folks.
Yeah, Madam Chair, there's, there's those dollars that, you know, have not passed yet, I think is what you're speaking about. But there is $10 billion that has passed.
Exactly.
And the rules for that, as I was talking with our consultant yesterday, just came out, like yesterday, or the proposed rules. So we'll get a look at those sometime soon. And yeah, that's $10 billion, I don't know what that, you know, goes through the whole country, so. But certainly, it's going to be an opportunity.
I'm talking about the benefit, the one that's supposed to help with affordability, both the homework gap and then the broader one. And, you know, I, I will say again, even if you live in a more dense area, it can be hard to upgrade your service. I'm going to have attempt three this week on trying to get CenturyLink out. I mean, they're coming out, they didn't show the last time. And yes, I'm sorry, CenturyLink, you're a great company in some ways, but if they say they're coming, you have to be there for 12 hours and they don't show up, it's really hard for anybody, especially if they've got kids, et cetera, at home. Blandon had a regional session on this recently, and they're going to be doing a statewide thing coming up next week or the week after, 12th to 14th.
No.
But I was thinking about, Redhead Creamery had one of the best examples, along with one of our township supervisors, that we heard Kelly talking about what was going on with her childcare, and then her kids about who could or couldn't get online. So as we continue to have those stories, we can at least hopefully make the case for some of the rest of us. Well, it'd be great to have that. And Lee, yeah, we've got several counties that are further, where we were a few years ago, but it still sometimes feels like, even from a mapping standpoint, that it can be banging one's head against the wall. I think that's a technical term.
Situation is, stay tuned.
Yes.
Yeah, and speaking of other counties, I've talked with our neighbors, I mean, obviously the service providers are not very concerned about county lines. So there could be projects that, you know, that cross lines.
It'd be great.
And we have providers that are based in, in other, predominantly based in other counties that want to expand into Stearns counties. So certainly, we've kept those lines of communication open as well.
Great. Anything else on this for right now? Persky?
Yeah, Mike, I appreciate all the effort on this. You know, there's a lot of money out there, and that money's going to be spent one way or the other, but I, you know, I do want to see us use it wisely. And mentioning about the county lines, it's just like the watershed. You know, if somebody can service Kimball for us outside of Stearns, that's fine. And if we can get people from Sauk Center and other counties, we will do that as well. But that Bruton, Belgrade, Elrosa area, yeah, it'd be nice to get those services.
Yeah, it's interesting. Aren't we like the only county that has, that is surrounded by as many counties as we have? And then we only have one school district that isn't in more than one county. So we're thinking about the impact on kids and on businesses and, you know, everything else. I think you're, you know, we just need to keep reinforcing that. And that doesn't even then include the, being one of 10 communities in the country that, in St. Cloud, that is in three counties. So it's just crazy, right? We got Surtel and Sauk Rapids and more and more. So it's, we, we've got a little bit more- So it's, we've got a little bit more complex nature about, because of the arbitrary lines, but we've got good partnerships. So that's, hopefully we can leverage this. I did have one other question, I almost forgot. You brought up about the townships. Do we know at this point that all of ours are going to be applying for the funds? Because that's kind of the key thing. If they don't ask for it, it won't be available.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure I can answer that question perfectly, but I do know that there, you know, we made that plea to them at the Township Officers' Meeting. After that, we heard that a number of them were in the process or had already done it. I know that a couple reached out over the weekend for help from our finance department because the deadline was yesterday, but I believe, I saw a notice that the deadline for cities had been extended. And so I'm assuming, I can't confirm, I'm assuming the deadline for townships is probably extended, too. I'm trying to find out if that's true.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for that.
Hopefully, just because I know of at least two that were, that haven't completed the application, I hope that deadline was extended.
Yeah, that was a good conversation on that. Okay, well, we'll be looking forward to that update and hopefully being able to get moving on that, knowing that we've got supply chain issues on that one, too. So issues by Commissioner, Commissioner Notch.
Well, I was just going to bring up, October 19th, we have the strategic planning workshop, correct? Is that going to be?
That's correct.
History museum?
I was going to bring that up. Yes, it'll be at the History Museum, we'll get you out of agenda. It'll, but consider to consume your whole day.
Okay.
Okay.
That was all I had.
Okay.
We won't go firing into the evening like we have, but you know, like a nine to four or five, or something like that, yeah.
Okay.
Great. Commissioner Persky.
I have nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Lenzmer. Commissioner Mergen.
I have nothing.
Okay. Well, aside from bringing up that Blandon is going to be doing this broadband conference, it's free, it's virtual, it's the 12th to 14th, we could probably, if you haven't seen it across your email, we could get it to you, in case you're interested in here, Mark, it's bringing industry and others together. And then it's been a while since we've had a COVID update, and we're going to be able to have one at the next time. It is still lurking out there. We had 800 new cases last week, which is pretty dang high. So we just want to encourage everybody to be able to get to be with their families, do their businesses, go to schools, and be in safe.
Yeah, we'll bring a report next meeting.
Great. And do you have anything else?
Nothing, I was going to bring up the planning session, so that's fine.
Wonderful, okay.
Commissioner Notch for doing that.
Well, thank you all. We are adjourned.